Let's bring this meeting of the Council Rail Committee to order. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fine.
Here.
Councilmember Koo.
Here.
Councilmember Scharf.
Here.
Chair Walbach.
Here.
For present.
Thank you. We have one speaker for oral communications, David Shen.
Distinguished rail committee and staff, I am Dave Shen, representing North Old Palo Alto Group and a member of the CAP. A few points. In support of the residents of South Palo Alto and of our own NOPA petition of 350 signatures, I'd like to reiterate that we all are opposed to any viaduct options due to concerns about noise and its visual impacts, especially to those whose backyards border on the main tracks. In relation to the Palo Alto Avenue crossing, we advocate for more studies of that crossing such that a solution to grade separation can be found. There has not been any discussion surrounding the use of land near the soccer field to the south of Palo Alto Avenue. The available space there could be used to shift the road slightly south, thereby giving room for an underpass that does not endanger either El Palo Alto nor the historical bridge. We advocate for such studies to be included in the work plan. We also advocate for detailed level studies of solutions at the Embarcadero underpass. Our group has had a meeting with residents living near the underpass where we discussed some creative options. By not locking ourselves into thinking current road paths must be followed and adding some exit ramps, we can substantially improve on the underpass, taking traffic away from surrounding neighborhoods and improve access between Alma and El Camino and beyond. Following on the motion made at City Council's June 19 meeting, which perfectly states, "Study additional options for addressing traffic in an Embarcadero Road underpass area including actions to minimize redirect traffic onto residential streets in adjacent neighborhoods and commit to adopting appropriate mitigations to address the impacts," we also advocate that studying these solutions be added to the current work plan, both in design and in further traffic studies to simulate traffic if improvements were added. The study of Embarcadero is critical to us, acknowledging that traffic is a system here in Palo Alto and not just individual grade crossings. Lastly, we want to commend and thank staff for maintaining incredibly aggressive schedule with many moving parts. We appreciate the collaboration and exchange of ideas in a non-divisive manner as we look towards and desire solutions that do not negatively impact any neighborhood in Palo Alto, but also recognizing that balance must be considered with forces outside our control. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to our first action item. First item is review of AECOM analysis for Charleston Road and East Meadow Avenue alternatives, including hybrid, viaduct, and trench. Staff, do you want to start us off?
Thank you, Chair Walbach. Rob DeGosse with the City Manager's Office. I'd like to introduce Eddie Mercurio, our project manager from AECOM. Been very busy over this last month, so a lot to share with the committee this morning and a full agenda. So with that, I think I'll pass it on to Eddie to provide the presentation.
Yes, good morning. This is a brief agenda of what I'm going to present today. I'm going to quickly go over schedule where we are today, kind of review what kind of criteria we're using, and we're going to go over what we've developed so far today. This is a work in progress for the alternatives at Charleston, Meadow, the trench, hybrid, and viaduct. You've seen the schedule before, but we are in the month of November. It's been an extremely busy month, and there's another agenda item here later to go over the work plan after I go through these alternative analyses. But here we are at Rail Committee in November. We have a community outreach -- excuse me, we have a community meeting at the end of November, on November 28th, where we'll be presenting these alternatives that are here today along with some other items that we'll go over as we review the work plan. So as a design criteria, what we're looking at as we develop these alternatives is we start with the published design criteria and regulations that are out there today, and we identify design exceptions where these design criterias cannot be met. Some of the high-level ones that we're looking at are the profile. Design criteria for Caltrain says, you know, 1%. We have some alternatives where we can't make that 1% work, and we're looking at 2%. Vertical clearance for trains is 24 and 1/2 feet, and vertical clearance for roadways is 15 and 1/2 feet. And I'll point out design criteria exceptions as I go through the exhibits themselves. But where possible, we do try and meet a criteria that is published out there as the basis for comparing alternatives. So this is in your package. This is the trench alternative, and I have a 3D animation that hopefully will make this a little clearer, but this is in your package. I just wanted to kind of go. The figure on the top is an aerial view that shows the green line is the Alma track alignment. The red is the shoe fly, which is a temporary railroad which we have to build in order to clear the construction area for building whatever, in this case, it is the trench, but building the permanent train alignment. And we do this because we have to keep commuter rail service in service during construction. We can't shut down the commuter rail as we build any one of these alternatives. And the figure on the lower portion is what we call a profile. It's basically showing you in an exaggerated -- excuse me, it's a five-to-one exaggeration on this as far as that, but it's basically just showing you how the railroad profile, you know, is going to descend into a trench and be lowered at -- is it not showing up on the --
No.
Oh, okay. Oh, I can -- my mouse isn't working here. Okay. And it goes lowered into a trench, and we stayed at 30 feet. This goes back to the vertical clearance of the train having to -- needing a 24 and 1/2 vertical clearance from the top of rail to a bottom of structure, and we're assuming about a five-foot structure depth. Hopefully, this is a cross-section, an example cross-section with -- yeah, there's no pointer on this. This is an example. On the left, right-hand side, is what we refer to as the temporary shoe fly. That would be constructed first in order to clear the area in the right -- excuse me, the left, where we would be building the trench section. As noted in the narrative that's in your packet, the shoe fly does encroach a couple feet into Alma Street, but encroaches about 20 feet at the intersections of Charleston and Meadow where, during construction, you would lose the turning lanes for those intersections because the shoe fly would occupy that space. We have some other issues with the trench. We do have high groundwater. There's been some groundwater measurement in the area that we found was with the groundwater about 13 feet below existing grade, so that's something we also would need to account for. And the other item that is when we're building these very tall retaining walls that are about 30 feet deep, one of the structural items that we have to consider is what we call a ground anchor, and that is a rod that goes back into the soil that will basically structurally strengthen the wall in order to support a 30-foot-high wall. Those are some of the items that we have to look at, and those ground anchors will limit our ability to do any planting above those ground anchors, and that also may require subsurface acquisitions into the properties immediately adjacent the railroad right-of-way. So now I'm going to go into the 3D animation. This is a work in progress. This is the aerial that we saw earlier. The green line is the existing Caltrain track. The red line we show construct -- it's going very fast -- is the shoe fly tracks that we build in order to clear the area. We're zooming into the north side of the -- down by Loma Verde. The first thing we do is we need to remove the vegetation, install temporary fence to basically protect the shoe fly, install the temporary shoe fly, and that, once that is installed, the new -- the Caltrain would operate on that shoe fly. And then this allows us to be able to construct, in this case, the trench. We're moving the trench construction south. When we get to Meadow Drive, we have to actually close Meadow Drive in order to construct the roadway bridges at Meadow Drive. Once those are constructed, Meadow Drive would then be reopened, and then the trench construction would continue, and then consequently also, once Meadow -- and the order whether Meadow or Charleston goes first is something that can be determined by the contractor, but then you would also close Charleston Road in order to build that bridge, and then the final act of construction would be to do some kind of landscaping. In that animation, we're showing very low shrubbery because we also have to be -- as I mentioned earlier, the ground anchors or the structural system supporting those walls will likely extend beyond the face of the wall somewhere back in -- beyond that. And ground anchors, on a general rule, if the ground -- if the wall's about 30 feet tall, the ground anchor couldn't extend as much as 30 feet back into the soil. So we started to list some of the pros and cons for each of the alternatives. For the trench, the pro on this one is it really is less -- has less visual impact because the trains are below existing grade between Charleston and Meadow. Some of the cons, we do block the creeks at Adobe and Barron. We are looking at ways to look at, you know, how you would design something, whether it be pumping plants or an inverted siphon, but those are at very high maintenance, very high -- there's also a risk of potential flooding with those types of structures. I've mentioned the subsurface right-of-way acquisition for the deep walls. It limits the type of planting, and also you may have to do acquisition into the backyards that are immediately adjacent those -- the Caltrain property. We also require a very high fence along the trench walls. This is for safety. Safety so it prevents people from throwing things into the Caltrain right-of-way, but also safety because we have high-voltage electrical wires that we have to prevent, you know, people -- the safety, you know, people from being able to, you know, accidentally or touch those wires. There are long-term maintenance costs associated with pumping groundwater, not only in the trench, where we would, you know, since there were in a fairly high groundwater, we'd have to pump groundwater, but we also may have to pump -- we'd also have to, excuse me, also pump runoff that would accumulate in the trench during any kind of rain event. This also requires a design exception. The only way we can make this alternative work is we have to have a 2% grade design exception from Caltrain. We tried to look at a 1%, and a 1% just does not work because of the constraints of -- mainly from the San Antonio Station on one end of this alternative. We do have some closures of Meadow and Charleston for construction, and we'd have to take a look at how those would impact, you know, vehicle traffic flow as well as pedestrian, bicycle. You know, those are very heavily traveled routes for the ped bike community with all the schools that are nearby there. And this is true for all the alternatives, is there is a crossover, and a crossover is what allows trains to switch from one track to another just before San Antonio Station that has to be relocated. And we have utilities within the Caltrain corridor that have to be relocated, as well as utilities located in Meadow and Charleston that would have to be relocated. And that's just an initial list, and as we've talked to the CAP earlier, we're also, you know, asking for input if there's, you know, other ones that, you know, people think of, you know, as pros and cons of all these alternatives that we need to be considering, as these all really play into the construction cost of each one of these alternatives as well. So moving on to the hybrid, this exhibit is in your packet as well. Just quickly from a -- orientate you, the figure on the top is an aerial with the north end on the left-hand side, we see Adobe Creek and Barron Creek as the two blue lines crossing the alignment. The green represents the existing track as well as Alma Street, and the red line in the aerial is the shoe fly or temporary railroad track. And the figure on the lower -- on the bottom half is the profile. This hybrid is where we will be raising the railroad and lowering the roadways at Charleston and Meadow. The key for us for lowering the roadway was to minimize right-of-way impact, so we only are lowering the road about five feet here and raising the tracks about 15 feet. The vertical clearance here requirement for roadways under the railroad is 15 and 1/2 feet, so there's a -- that's why, you know, the trench is 30 feet down because the vertical clearance for trains is greater than having to raise the tracks because we only need to, you know, have a vertical clearance of 15 and 1/2 feet for the roadway. This is a typical section or example section. Here, the shoe fly is shown to the right-hand side. It's similar to the trench. The shoe fly is adjacent Alma Street, but at the intersections of Meadow and Charleston, the turning lanes would be lost during construction, so those as a consideration to the impact to traffic. The figure on -- to the left here is we're showing the embankment -- we're showing the train on embankment for the hybrid. And things to note here is that, you know, we would probably be installing some kind of sound wall barrier to mitigate noise issues, and the size and type of that would still be -- need to be determined. This is a 3D animation. Again, this is a work in progress. This is the aerial view we saw earlier. The green represents the existing tracks. In this case, we would build a shoe fly track first just to clear the construction area for Charleston. This is really to try and minimize the impact to traffic issues on Alma Street. That allows us to build the embankment, construct the Charleston Road, and then, once we've finished Charleston, then we would continue the shoe fly and then do the same process for Meadow Drive. In this animation, we have tried to maintain some type of traffic on Alma and Meadow and Charleston, and the animation kind of goes through that process because we have to maintain commuter rail -- let me just stop this for a second. Well, maybe I'll come back and play it again. We have to maintain the commuter rail traffic, is that we build the embankment, we move -- we build the bridges for over Meadow and Drive, but we have a limited vertical clearance because we really can't build both lowered roadways at the same time, so we will have a vertical clearance of 12 feet during construction, and then we come back once we've switched the railroad back up to the new embankment, then we come back and we do the lowering of Meadow and Charleston after the train has moved on. So, looks like I did stop it. So let me go back and play this. All right, I'll just start it over again, apologize. So first, we build the shoe fly just around Charleston Road to limit impacts to the roadway of Alma and Charleston. Once Charleston embankment and bridge, railroad bridge is bit, then we continue the shoe fly so that we can then build the embankment and railroad bridge over Meadow Drive. Then we switch the train traffic from the shoe fly back up to the newly constructed embankment, and then this allows us to come back and build or lower the roadways individually first at Meadow Drive, and conversely, this, you know, the order could be however, you know, deemed, you know, and then Charleston, but the point is you wouldn't be lowering them at the same time. So this is a 3D animation, starting -- this is the first shoe fly track, so we're starting just below Meadow Drive. We're building that first shoe fly so we can clear the construction. This allows us to then start constructing the embankment. So the first, you know, as we also need to be constructing some abutments and some column supports for the -- to take the railroad bridge, construct the embankments, construct the bridge. Here's the 12-foot vertical clearance that's going to be a temporary situation. We've checked buses can clear that vertical clearance, but it is a design exception that we would have to then get from Caltrain on that. Once we've done Meadow -- excuse me, Charleston, then we can continue on to Meadow, constructing the abutments and the piers, constructing the embankment, constructing the railroad bridge, and once that railroad bridge is constructed, then you can move the train traffic up to the newly constructed tracks and embankment, remove the shoe fly. This is showing that we're landscaping, but the reality is the landscape would happen at the end of all construction, not at this point in time. And then this is where -- this is showing some staging of how we would lower the road. We would be limiting Alma instead of to four lanes that it is today. It would be two lanes, one lane in each direction, and same thing for Meadow Drive that allows us to lower the roadways, you know, by halves. And then ultimately, this is showing a four-way stop at Alma and Meadow. It'd likely be a temporary signalized intersection during construction. And then the final configuration, which would be restoring it back to its current signalized intersection. And then similarly, moving from Meadow Drive, once that's constructed, then we'd do a similar And instantaneously, Charleston had no problems. And Charleston and Meadow would have a very -- if you're familiar with San Carlos and some of the hybrids that are up along the Caltrain corridor, it would have that kind of look of a lowered roadway and raised embankment. So some of the pros and cons with the hybrid, you know, we do not have any issues with the creeks, you know, where the creeks would basically remain as they are today. We have very minor right-of-way impacts, and actually, that should go in the con. We can restore landscaping with trees at the end of -- at the completion of construction, unlike in the trench where we're going to have limited landscaping. We can have -- the shoe fly is shorter in this case than the trench. The trench has probably the longest shoe fly. It has lower long-term maintenance costs, and this particular alternative that we're looking at does not require permanent design exceptions in the case that we are able to make this work with 1% grades. However, we do have temporary design exceptions for the 12-foot vertical clearance. The cons are we have really complicated construction staging that can close portions of Alma and Charleston, and we'd have the limited vertical clearance. We have the same issue of relocating the railroad crossover, and we still have major -- excuse me, utility relocations because of the utilities, in this case, in Alma, Meadow, and Charleston's. However, the utilities that are within the Caltrain corridor would likely not be impacted because we're just building embankment on top of it. So finally, the last alternative that I will go through is what we call the viaduct, which is a -- the railroad is raised on structure, just like in the exhibits previously, and this is in your packet. The upper figure is an aerial structure with the north to the left, the creeks shown in blue crossing the alignment. The red is the shoe fly, and the green is representing the existing tracks and adjacent Alma. The figure on the lower portion is the profile, where we take the viaduct up and over the roadways. We are here at a 15 and 1/2-foot vertical clearance over the roadways with an assumed structure depth of about five feet, so our total raised railroad is about 20, 21 feet This is a sample cross-section showing a viaduct in the similar location as we showed for the trench and the hybrid with the viaduct structure shown on the left-hand side with sound wall barriers that would probably be constructed on this to attenuate noise, and then we'd have the temporary fences protecting the shoe fly on the bottom. I'll come back to this, but as we look at the 3D viaduct, we also have checked we're looking at putting the permanent track in the location of the shoe fly, thereby being able to eliminate the shoe fly, and we've run the numbers. The difference here is the shoe fly is designed for a 75 mile-per-hour design speed, and a permanent track needs to be designed for 110 miles per hour, and that evaluation is looking very promising in the fact that we could basically move the viaduct structure to where the shoe fly is and then -- and have that as another option, but we're working on that option and developing the exhibits for that, so I don't have any exhibits for that today. So this is the 3D animation. We've seen this aerial here with the shoe fly as being built first to clear the construction area. The viaduct is constructed, depicted in purple, and we start again at the north end around Loma Verde. We remove the vegetation first, install the temporary protective fencing, then we can install the shoe fly. And once we've moved the Caltrain operations to the shoe fly, then we can start the construction of a viaduct where, for the first portion of the viaduct, about the first 600 feet, it's on embankment until we get enough height, and then it moves to structure. It stays on structure over Meadow and continues at a raised viaduct over Meadow to Charleston, and once it gets to Charleston, then it goes back down on embankment, and at the completion, you can come back and landscape the areas in and around the viaduct. If you could imagine where that shoe fly alignment was, would be where a permanent viaduct is, and we're developing that alternative here. So the pros, this one has probably the least impact to roadways during construction. As I mentioned, we have the option to build this without a shoe fly. Landscaping can be restored. There's an opportunity for a park if we, you know, a linear park, and it does not block creeks, just in the hybrid version as well. It probably has the lowest long-term maintenance cost, and we really avoid major utility relocations in the roadways as well as in the Caltrain corridor. The cons are, you know, it does have the -- probably the highest visual impact. This one does require a design exception. The portion of the grade going from -- coming back down at the southern end of the profile is at a 1.4%, so that would require a design exception from Caltrain, and it also requires the railroad crossover just north of Antonio, as did all the alternatives. So as we look through these alternatives, we will be developing an evaluation matrix, which is based on the criteria that was adopted by City Council back in 2017. We've taken this criteria here, and we've started the process of putting it into an evaluation matrix. We presented this evaluation to the CAP, and we're asking for feedback on this as well, you know, or ideas, where each one of the -- on the upper -- where's your upper line there, we have the three alternatives, and then the criteria is on the left-hand side, kind of moving down and looking at each one of these, how these alternatives play relative to each other, not necessarily, you know, to other things, just trying to narrow down these alternatives, there's their pros and cons, and how, you know, which one is ultimately going to, you know, surface to the top as a preferred alternative. We are working on the order of magnitude of cost, and we will have those costs by the time the community meeting comes around on November 28th, but we're in the process of doing some review of those, making sure that we have captured the costs adequately because there are a lot of cost issues associated with each one of these alternatives. And with that, that's And with that, I, that's the questions or comments.
You know, actually, before we go to that, if I might ask for one clarification, Eddie, you made several references to right-of-way and impacts on right-of-way. Could you clarify that since, you know, it's often not understood that what you mean by that is property acquisition? You did make reference, in the case of trench, to the subsurface easements needed. But in terms of actual property changes needed, would you do a quick recap of that?
So for these alternatives, as I, to kind of recap is when we started looking at these alternatives, when we were looking at the roadway, we tried to limit the number of impacts to private property. And so as we look at these, and hopefully I'm addressing this. So, so we looked at those, and so the hybrid does, you know, as we lower the roadway, we do touch a couple driveways, so those are some property acquisition or some type of negotiation to make those driveway modifications. In the trench, there is a right-of-way impact potential for subsurface because of the ground anchors. And in the viaduct, there is no property or right-of-way necessary as we see it today for that alternative. The other items that we also need to consider when we look at the trench, as well as the hybrid, is locations for pumping plants, as well as locations for those drainage facilities that may also require right-of-way. But we need to take a look at if we can fit those into areas that would not have private property impacts. And that's kind of as we've moved these alternatives forward, is we're trying to look at those, these alternatives to reduce private property impacts. There is some, I guess, negotiation between the Caltrain right-of-way and what city right-of-way as well, so we should probably bring that into the fold as well. But that happens for all three alternatives in this case.
Thank you. I did just want to highlight that, recognizing the previous discussion and concerns regarding private property acquisition, and that none of these alternatives really require substantial or much less any whole property acquisitions, private property acquisitions, to your point. Thank you.
So let's do, just real quick clarifying questions from committee members, and then we have several public speakers who will have three minutes each. And as it has been our practice for this committee this year, people will have an opportunity to speak again, if you need to. No requirement to speak again, but you will have an opportunity to speak again, or if you did not speak during this first round, towards the end of our discussion on each action item. I have a quick clarifying question. You said that by the time we go to the community meeting at the end of the month, we'll have cost estimates. Cost estimates will depend significantly on responses from Caltrain to our recent letter, and we're expecting that will take quite some time, perhaps months even. And so when you bring us cost estimates, will you bring us, if A, cost X, if B, cost Y, et cetera, depending on the contingencies such as variances on steepness of grade and clearance? Because that'll, again, have a real significant impact on cost.
So we will be costing this based on the alternatives we have, and we can do, we will have, we can have contingencies in there for like, you know, if X or if Y. Right now, for instance, the trench, we can only make the trench work with a 2%. So we are going to assume that at this point in time, somewhere down the line, a 2% would be achievable. So as we move forward with the cost estimate, we're making that assumption.
And what if the, will you also include a alternative for the cost if we're able to get an exemption on the height of the clearance required for the trench?
A permanent, you mean, oh, if you, if we were able-
If we're able to reduce the height clearance requirement from 25 feet to about 18 feet, as we've requested?
We, we can take a look at that. We've, we've run some initial engineering analysis on that, and it doesn't reduce the length very much. So I'm not, we could take a look at that, yeah.
Okay. Just, I think it'll be helpful to have a sense of whether that would significantly impact the cost, as a lot of people have suggested. Any other clarifying questions?
Perhaps, just, just to be clear on what Eddie's response was. I think as she described, it's not expected to significantly reduce the length of the work needed. And so there would be an incremental savings. I do have to question whether preparing a separate cost estimate for that alternative is valuable at this point. I think we're going to be looking at lots of different incremental changes and variations on the themes along the way. So while I'm sure the AECOM team is capable of coming up with another estimate, we haven't directed them to do that as, at this point.
Well, we might want to at least include asterisks.
And recognize, again, to your point, there could be a number of reasons that there could be savings, but we do want to present, in order of magnitude for comparison purposes, cost estimate among the different alternatives.
Right. Yeah, if it's, if it's the professional understanding, recommendation of the staff, the consultants, that the cost savings from achieving that height clearance exemption would be incremental rather than substantial, you know, mention that as well. But just, it's, it's just something important to address, I think, at the minimum. Any other clarifying questions, and then we'll have several public speakers. Adrian?
Thank you very much. That was very helpful. Three quick questions. One, just to be absolutely clear, the shoe flies will be at grade, right? In all cases?
That is correct.
Okay. And then did I hear you correctly that a 2% grade exception is only needed in the southern portion from San Antonio to Charleston?
For the trench?
For the trench.
No, it's on both.
It's also from East Meadow to Calav?
It's in the exhibit, but let me, let me look at that before I... No, it's on both.
It's on both sides?
Both sides, correct.
I thought I heard you say it was just on the San Antonio side. And then you mentioned that all of these designs are using 110 miles per hour as the design speed requirement. Is that the assumption we're using across all of our scenarios, including the tunnel?
Correct.
Okay.
That is the, that is the design speed that's required and it's listed in the Caltrain design criteria. So to your question there is like, we're trying to keep criteria similar, so we're kind of comparing apples and apples as we look at these alternatives.
Okay, fair. Thank you.
Greg?
Yeah, maybe I missed it, but the difference between the viaduct and the hybrid, what's the difference in the height? I was, I mean, do we have a height number for each?
Yes. The viaduct, the top of rail, and I'll just, you know, for that reference, the top of rail for the viaduct is about 21 feet above the road surface. And the hybrid is about 15 feet above the road surface, so about six-foot difference. Excluding fences and barriers, it's just for comparison.
So I guess the question is, is how do we judge? I mean, 15 feet is still pretty, is a pretty, pretty, pretty big high barrier, frankly. I'm, I'm trying to figure out how we're going to judge what the real visual impact is on that, and is there, are there noise? Is it louder, or is that not a, not a factor? I mean, I'm just trying to hone in on the differences between the two. Because it seems like the viaduct, when you do this, has, you know, a lot less traffic impacts than that as we build it, and there's a bunch of stuff. So I guess the question is, is it, you know, how are we going to, what are we going to use to figure those issues out?
So at the CAP's suggestion, we have been asked to create visuals of views looking from the viaduct down and looking from, you know, backyards up. And so we're taking, we can do that, once we've done these 3D animations, we can then create those views. So that's what they're in the process of doing, so that hopefully that gives people an ability to visualize what that would look like.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope. Lydia?
Thank you. So Caltrain, right now, on the existing track is installing this shoe fly, correct? For their, I mean, or their electrical poles currently on the existing?
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
So Caltrain, they're installing their poles for the electrification along the existing rail. So I was just wondering, for your viaduct option, and even perhaps the trench, instead of doing the shoe fly, why can't we leave Caltrain where it is right now and then start the viaduct construction or even the trench in the center? And then have both sides relieve, I mean, at least have less impact visually as well as noise for the houses on both sides?
So we did, our, my engineer did take a look at, you're talking for the trench option, correct?
Trench or viaduct. You know, I mean, because the viaduct, at this point, the one that you showed, is really close to the west side.
Right.
And then you have that open space in the center with vegetation and so forth in the future. Instead of having the viaduct right next to the homes, why not put it in the center and have, you know, more other uses on the two sides where houses abut the, the?
We are actually looking at that right now, and, and so the difference, it does work for the viaduct.
Only the viaduct.
Huh?
Only the viaduct.
Only the viaduct. The difference here that we have to consider is the shoe fly is designed for a 75 mile-per-hour design speed. So that, you know, and, but a permanent alignment, which is what you were talking about, is designed for 110 mile-per-hour design speed. So it takes longer to, for the vertical curves, takes longer, you know, so it affects the geometry. For the viaduct, it looks like we can make it work. For, I mean, excuse me, yeah, for the viaduct. For the trench, we did look at it, and it does not work because of the geometry that we have and the constraints that we have. So...
But you will consider putting together another option for the viaduct to show in the center versus towards the west side, close to the houses?
It's, it, not in this, here, let me go back to that slide here. So the, what we're looking at is not in the center, so where the shoe fly is shown here would be where the viaduct could be located. And that would free up the, where the viaduct is located. Basically, you'd flop this, but you wouldn't have a shoe fly at all.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so AECOM is looking at that variation?
Would that be able to be presented at the 28th, so that the community also has that option to review? I mean, if we're going to go out to a community?
Yes.
Okay.
We're in the process of doing that now.
So I have a little bit of terminology, help me with that. When you say "top of rail," you're not adding on the train itself on the viaduct. So when you say, for example, the hybrid is at 15 feet from the street? From ground? Goes up 15 feet? Then you have to add the train, height of the train. So please do that into your presentation, because that's important when they're going by. Then also with the other one, the 21 feet, I think that's a viaduct, right?
The 21 feet is the viaduct, yes.
Right. So that's from the street to the viaduct rail itself.
Right. So I'm getting the mouse working. So when I say "top of tra," when I say "top of rail," that's really the bottom of the train.
Yeah, okay.
The wheels, yeah.
But so, when you add the train, and in this picture, it's really great, because you see the viaduct, it's going to be 21 feet up in the air. Then you add on the train itself, that's another height. And then you have the poles. And these poles are tall. I mean, very tall. So it'd be good to have the, how, how tall they are, how, you know, the feet, including the train. What's the height of the train? What is the height of the pole? Then your sound wall barrier, same thing. I mean, include all of the heights in there, so people know. Yeah. So that would be one that I would like to clarify on. Then also with your, what are those called? You know, the right-of-way, the?
The anchors?
Anchors, yes, thank you. You know, I was watching the video from the CAP meeting, and Tony Carrasco mentioned that there was the, in the presentation that-
Oh, the elementary corridor alternative, right.
The other gentleman from-
Yes.
Who had their rail put in the trench. They had the concrete beams across the top to do the same function of keeping the walls intact in place. Why are we not going with that, and why are we intruding into private property right-of-ways? I think that's another option that we should be looking at.
We are, we are looking at that. We, this, these are, those are called whalers or struts.
Whalers?
Whalers or struts. Those would be a beam that would, what he was talking about, you'd put a beam right here at the top-
Right.
Here, and that would allow you, we are taking a look at that. The portion where the struts and whalers would not work is where you start, are you starting to descend into your full trench? Because those would be in the way of the train operations. But you could look at struts and whalers in the portions between Charleston and Meadow. But our initial evaluation is that that could reduce the number of ground anchors, but it would not necessarily eliminate the number of ground anchors. But we're taking a look at the ge, because ground acre design is a function of geotechnical engineering, and what the soil is behind it, you know, where the groundwater is, and then the, you know, the height and the loading that's coming into the walls. So we'll take a look at that and see if it's, if it's, if it's, it can eliminate, but our, my initial reaction is it may reduce, but it may, it would not eliminate ground anchors.
I understand ground anchors, if it goes into a private property, is that would mean that perhaps they won't have, they have the ability to have swimming pools? They can't plant trees?
It would be a-
That's an invasion, right?
It would be an encumbered right-of-way. That would, would have limitations on it to what people could do over that right-of-way.
Right. And I don't think the water table over there is as high. I'm not quite sure, but, you know, that's something that's going to be eliminated for many people. So as much options as you can put out there with, so that at this November 28th meeting is something that is important for everybody to kind of understand what they're going to be getting. Then one more thing is, why are we not looking, so you're presenting all of these options at the next meeting, but then the tunnel is not in there? How soon, I mean, I hope that that is going to be something that's brought up to everybody at the community meeting, that this option is still to come, and it's not something that we're not addressing. Correct?
Correct. We're going to go over the work plan here next.
Okay.
And the next community meeting, which is in January, is going to touch on the tunnel within city limits, as well as the Palo Alto and Churchill alternatives that are still on the table.
Okay. Last question. So I understand that, you know, with the water, with the creeks and so forth, there's supposed to be a letter from the Santa Clara Valley Water District. I don't see it at places. Any, any time that we'll get it soon? Now?
We do have the letter from the Water District. We did meet with them, or the team met with them on October 12th, and we asked them to put in writing the responses to the questions we had. And we have an at-places memo for-
You do?
Committee and for the public at the back for the, and it includes three letters, in fact. It's the letter that, that we sent to Caltrain on exceptions that we're, and criteria that we'd like to see exceptions in for our alternative analysis, plus the letter from the Water District on their response to the alternatives that are being evaluated. And then there's also a letter from 2017 that was requested, that was sent to the JPB, so.
Oh, I didn't see this. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
So we're going to go to public speakers on this one. We do have quite a few public speakers. I already said that you'd have three minutes each. If you can make your comments in one or two minutes, please do, but you will have a three-minute limit. And again, you do not need to speak a second time or use all of your time. I just want to make sure we can get through this, this content efficiently. So our first speaker, our first speaker is David Herzl, to be followed by Bonnie. So, our first speaker, our first speaker is David Herzl, to be followed by Bonnie. And, just apologies for the noise, there's some work going on testing an alarm system, so please forgive the annoying beeping sound. Go.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, council members, for listening to me. I've lived in Palo Alto for over 50 years. I believe that Palo Alto is a great community, and I currently live right on, my backyard is right next to the railroad tracks. So, this is going to impact me directly, and it impacts all, all the citizens of Palo Alto. I want to thank you for today about a lot of these graphics, it really helps in looking at the different options and so forth. I still believe that the trench is really the best option. I'm sticking with that. And one of the main reasons is noise and vibration, and also visually. Also, a little bit about, you know, bike safety and so, so forth. You know, I've been to a bunch of, I believe that the trench is what the community wants. There is a petition out there that, that wants to, is against all raised options. I've been to many community meetings, and a lot of what I get feedback is, a lot of people like the trench, and I still believe it is the best option. It was disappointing last meeting that the trench was not a true option, for they had to overcome some of the setbacks with the creeks, and also with the 2% approval. This project that the citizen, you know, this project affects all the citizens and the future generations have to live with. I think it is important to make the right decision, the decision that the community wants. I hope that the city will work to make the trench a true option. And what I mean by that is, is, you know, make sure that they get these exceptions through. To sum it up, the trench may be a hard option, but I believe it's the best option, and the city should put forth the effort to make it a true option. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herzl. Bonnie Parker, to be followed by Ellen Hartog.
Hi, actually, it's Bonnie Park. Bonnie Parker was notorious criminal.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay. First, I am a research scientist at NASA Ames, and I live in South Palo Alto, and I travel the length of Alma, all the way to Moffitt. So, I've done this for over 20 years, so I feel really familiar with the whole stretch. The, I want to thank you, Lydia, for talking about the tunnel option, and saying, well, it's really not completely off. And Adrian wrote me a very nice email, saying, let's, we haven't, we're still considering the tunnel as an option and doing our due diligence on it, and I was very glad to hear that. However, when I came in today, I sat down, and the gentleman next to me said, "Well, that's out. The tunnel is out. It is so expensive." So, I, being in Palo Alto for so long, I realized that the land is so valuable, it seems to me that if we could build, if we had a tunnel and could build on that land, that would help reimburse us. Now, so, Adrian said that, in fact, the city doesn't own the land. So, I just wonder if, in fact, all of the possible deal-making has gone on there with the people that do own the land. I think that this will be brought up at all of the community meetings, because everyone realizes the price of land around here is really high. The, there are bond issues. There, this possibility of state funding, when Jerry Brown goes, he's very much attached to his big rail, high-speed railroad, and who knows, maybe someone can divert some of that funding to this very important inter-city, shorter-span option. The, the Boring Company, I was really pleased to hear that Adrian has contacted the Boring Company, and even though, well, they're having a demo project, starts the 10th of December in LA with their tunnels, and it seems to me that even though Adrian said they're not, they've indicated they're not quite ready for a project like this, hey, maybe their lead engineer could be co-opted, at least investigate the possibility of a tunnel like that. And it seems to me that the city of Palo Alto should surely pay for you guys to go down there and see that demo. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Hartog, to be followed by Jim Silver.
Good morning, thank you for all your hard work. I appreciate the letter you wrote for the exemptions and height reductions of the trains, and that you are following up on below-grade options. And I would like to ask that you also maybe recommend that the freight stay at grade and the train go below grade, because I think that was probably some of the problems with going with a 2% grade, and we haven't recommend, had that recommendation to City Council to study. So, as far as above-grade, I'm very concerned about the environmental issues to health with noise, vibration, especially the quality of life, and the sight, unsightliness of concrete embankments, and the height issues. There are so many cons to those scenarios that the neighborhoods really would suffer from, and it is impactful, even though you're saving in traffic, in money, our quality of life in the future hundreds of years to come, we're making those types of decisions today. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Jim Silver, to be followed by Steve Jennings. All right, Steve Jennings, to be followed by Davina Brown.
Good morning, I'm Steve Jennings, I live at 369 Wickham Drive. Our house is situated about 100 yards from Adobe Creek, and we are upstream of Alma and the rail crossing. So, I'm kind of interested in exactly what would be involved in rerouting Adobe Creek if a trench option is adopted. It appears to me that, just from an eyeball glance at the proximity of Adobe Creek to Charleston Road, that that would be a pretty major undertaking, and I think it may be important to know more about what might be involved with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Davina Brown, to be followed by Nadia Naiak.
Good morning. I've been here before, and I thank you for your service. I still feel that below-ground option is here for our whole community, for now and forevermore. This is not a decision for today. I'm old, I probably even won't be here to worry about how high and ugly it is, you know? But, on the trench, we were shown only one pro site. Well, sound mitigation, safety, ease of passage by bikes and pedestrians are all pros for doing below-ground. The trench is now and forever. The problem with the engineering and money is silly. We have some of the brightest people in the world living in this area. To tell me we can't solve an engineering problem about creeks is not realistic. You know, we have rainy people. And as far as money, you know, we always find it. They just redid Ross Road for a bike boulevard for over a million dollars. You know, find money for what we need, we will solve the problem. Let's do what the community wants, but the train under the road level. Thank you.
Thank you, Davina. Nadia Naiak, to be followed by Koushri Gandhi.
Hi, so, I, we've looked at the issue of the creeks and how to get under it with a trench in 2014. For those of you in the audience who've tried to find this, I had a hard time finding it. It actually, there was no real committee meetings in 2014, so you have to go to the City Council website for 2014 and look at their October 14th meeting, and that's where you could see the plans that Hatch-Mott-McDonald had originally drawn for a trench, and how they got under the different creeks. I would love to hear from the consultants what the difference is in how Hatch-Mott seemed to be able to get under the creeks versus what's being proposed today, because I don't understand the differences, and there's no good diagrams in Hatch-Mott's old work to, to be able to distinguish from what AECOM is proposing. So, I think that's a really important thing. As a CAP member, I also want to apologize, because I, the meetings that we're having are not really set up in a way to give a lot of feedback to what we've seen, so yes, we've reviewed all of those videos, but if you go back and watch the CAP meeting video, you can see that we had a meeting of two hours and 10 minutes, and not much time to get much in. I'm most concerned about the fact that the videos that we do have don't reflect the creeks in the video, and specifically, that while we seem to have two alternatives for a viaduct, which I think is great, I don't think we have enough clarification around the creek issue for the trench, which may or may not be a poison pill on this issue. And considering that it is the community favorite, I'm concerned that, you know, we're going into a community meeting in two weeks. If we don't really flesh out what's happening there, the community is again going to feel that this community meeting is biased in a particular way. I think the previous speaker talked about the fact that the pros and cons list for the trench has a single pro and lots of cons. I'd be surprised that we can't at least show that there are more pros of the trench. I mean, clearly, it's a community favorite, because there's other things that are considered positive, and if we go to these community meetings and don't provide a more balanced approach, it's going to be, it's not going to be received well. As someone who participated, has been doing this for a while, as you know, I'm, I'm always really sensitive to how we present things to the community, and I know you guys are doing a lot of hard work, and I think these videos are super helpful for the community to understand what's happening, but we have to be really measured and careful that we're showing these things equally. Lastly, I'm wondering if there's any geotechnical information that we might have from any previous project we've done in Palo Alto, to give us some kind of inkling of what the soils are along the right-of-way that may or may not present any problems with the trench or tunnel options going forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Koushri Gandhi, to be followed by Florence Keller.
Good morning, my name is Koushri Gandhi, and first off, of course, I thank everybody, including the AECOM guys, for the presentation. It was very helpful to actually see the thing happening. I'd echo Lydia, and next time that you have these, please actually have the trains on there and the poles on there, rather than just the structures, because that can give us a better idea of how tall something might or might not be. I live at Charleston Meadows, I would want to put a plug in, again, we, our community is strongly forbearing the train. We've gone through lots of issues with the train, with students, high school students, et cetera. We would really like the train out of sight. We understand how important Caltrain is, we're not trying to make that go away. We would just like to maintain our community feel. We want the train to work, we love taking the train to San Francisco when we can, but we don't particularly want it over our heads. Our beeping right now was bad enough, imagine the noise pollution that's going to happen with the train high up there, with the frequency increased by Caltrain. Imagine the noise when the freight goes over, it's pretty heavy and clunky, and the vibrations there are off. So, if this beeping was bad for the last 15 minutes, imagine having to live with that for the next 100 years. Just saying. I actually really also echoed Lydia's solution of trying to either move the viaduct or the trench to the middle of Alma, so we have a lane going, you know, one-way direction either side. That would mitigate the, what do you call it, the subsurface acquisition that you would need, because then the sub-subsurface acquisition is under the road and not in people's backyards. We don't have to deal with the shrubbery and all those different cons that are there. Again, I'd echo an other resident saying, we could probably figure out the engineering living in this area. The last thing that I would like to bring up is that, among all the safety mitigations, you talked about flooding as a con for the trench, and so on and so forth. I'd also like to see some safety mitigations for earthquakes when we have an elevated structure. I did not see any of that. We'd probably need walls or something else, and how that is going to affect the cost, because from personal experience, we're just trying to earthquake-proof a house, anytime you try to earthquake-proof anything, the cost goes up radically. So, I would like to see some information on that. I think we've been in a drought long enough, people are more worried about the earthquakes than flooding at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Florence Keller, to be followed by Cedric.
Good morning, my name is Florence Keller. You know, I've been to a few of these meetings, and the engineers talk above my head, but there seems to be no discussion of psychosocial costs, and surely, in this town, we are sophisticated enough to recognize that it's not simply engineering costs that we should be concerned about. So, you were all good enough to spend a lot of time and energy avoiding eminent domain. So, you said to Churchill residents, "We're going to spare you eminent domain." Well, you may not have to take anybody's houses, but can anybody live in those houses? Really? Can you live in a house with the acoustical blight? The visual blight? Maybe some takings, I don't know. So, it might be kinder to take the housing. I wrote a letter last night, Adrian, you were kind enough to let me know you'd received it, in which I suggest, I told you that there are two houses currently for sale, right on the tracks, right across from Robles Park, between Charleston and Meadow. They are not selling. They've reduced their prices. So, even financially, the hit is going to be, guess where, ladies and gentlemen? South Palo Alto. So, maybe next prayer time, we can have an expert on what the implications of all of these different possibilities are on style of life. Nobody's paying attention to that cost. I hope in the future, we will. Thank you.
Thank you. Cedric, to be followed by Roland Lebrun.
Thank you. Cedric De La Bojartier. I have a couple of questions for the trench. How far back from the trench would the tree exclusion zone extend as a function of the track depth? And what is the distance of the western trench wall from the western right-of-way boundary south of Meadow? I think the 3D animations for the trench should show the impact of the trees cleared from people's backyards where they're affected, since that's a big impact for those residents, and also, the 3D animation should show the impacts of the creek. For the viaduct, are you, for the option that doesn't require the shoe-fly track, will your cost estimate be adjusted accordingly, so you don't have to pay for that shoe-fly track? And then, the visual impacts, it really, the impacts or the benefits, if it's elevated or dropped, those depend on how, depend on how close you are to the intersection. So, if you're 1,000 feet away from the intersection with the viaduct, then the train might be only five feet off the ground. So, it'd be great to have a map of the homes and grade them depending on how high the structure is behind them, or how low the thing is behind them. And noise and vibration impacts of elevated rail can be successfully mitigated. There are proven utilized designs in other parts of the world that have been shown to reduce the sound by 20 dB, which is the equivalent of reducing the sound by 75% from the level of the train on an elevated structure without those mitigations. So, that's a significant reduction of noise from even current conditions. And, and, let's see, viaduct is obviously the best from a bike and pedestrian crossing perspective, since they can cross at grade. In the option that has, retains the western track, the freight could potentially stay at grade in that option. Presumably, all engineering requirements for elevated rails take into account earthquake safety in California. And for the safe, for the savings that you would achieve by... And for the safe, for the savings that you would achieve by not going the astronomically priced route, you could invest some of those savings towards, for instance, installing sound insulation for homes. You could have a revolving fund to purchase people's homes that are, you know, say, two years to decide, "I really can't live with this thing back here." Well, we'll buy your home at a generous price and sell it to someone who doesn't have that issue. And then finally, I think as a council, you're considering these choices in the absence of all other city considerations and needs, and future needs that the city might face. So, you know, we have, at least at the beginning of the year, we had a $56 million shortfall for infrastructure, and the city's freaking out about that, and how do we address that? There are future needs of, you know, climate mitigation, climate adaptation, and these needs would help all of the city's residents, not the, not just the 200 or so residents that live closest to the intersections. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Cedric. Final speaker, Roland Lebrun.
Thank you. So very briefly, I'd like to talk about design speed versus operating speed. And typically, the design speed has got to be 10% higher than the operating speed. And my understanding is that Caltrain and high-speed rail intend to operate at 110. You would therefore derive from that that this design speed would actually be 125, not 110. I'll give you a couple of examples. The High Speed Authority intends to operate at 220 miles an hour in the Central Valley. They're actually designing for 250. The speed limit in the high-speed towns in London is 147 miles an hour. We had to test them at 165. So in closing, my advice is to go back and revisit this, because I believe that designing for 110 is incorrect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Let's bring it back to committee members. Any additional comments or thoughts? Is staff looking for real action on this item? Do you want to clarify what you're looking from us for?
Thank you, Chair Wolbach. So really, feedback on the information we've presented you with a lot of information, hopefully is helpful to get a better sense of these three options, particularly the visuals, and as consultant team staff have been doing a lot of work on this. So mainly, it's feedback on these options, questions, particularly frequently asked questions that you might think ought to be added to the public website. As far as narrowing the field of alternatives for these two crossings, that's really at the committee's pleasure, staff's perspective on this is that there's still some additional analysis to be done on these options, particularly around cost. So to eliminate an option today, we would recommend that, you know, we look to doing that in December after we've had the community meeting. We plan to have an additional CAP meeting. The CAP asked for that, and they've been terrific, and we've given them a lot of information. So having a second meeting, particularly on these southern crossings, so they can absorb that information even better. And then when we're back with the full council on December 17th would be, you know, probably more appropriate time to narrow the alternatives. So that's where staff is.
Adrian?
Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone, for speaking up today. Number of comments and some questions. First of all, I think Councilmember Ku had two good questions. I want to line myself with one, is kind of the option of moving the viaduct to the east, kind of more centrally located, and seeing what that would look like for residents. And I think especially, given the visual diagrams, that might be helpful. And the other issue she raised was kind of elevations of the full height of these systems, whether it's a berm, fence, catenary, train, whatever else, whether other options are there, just kind of giving people an idea of what it looks like. You know, maybe it's both from the Park Boulevard side and from the Alma side. I think those are, would be helpful. Can we go back to the evaluation matrix? Okay. Thank you. So I think this is a good start, and I remember a few months ago, maybe it was last year, we saw a similar one from either Belmont or San Carlos. And this is a nice way to begin looking at it. I look forward to us filling in the rest of the bubbles here. And I'd also encourage us to, you know, do this across all the other alternatives we've looked at, both for Palo Alto Ave and Churchill. I think that's helpful. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to read the rest of this. Did the CAP have any feedback on this?
The CAP did have feedback on this. They saw it last week on the seventh when we met. Initial reaction was definitely they appreciated it like more than the previous matrix we had, which is pretty complicated to understand. Eddie, you might have some additional information, that specific feedback. We did talk about the grading and how, you know, we've got, whatever that is, six or seven grades there, and does it make sense to have that many or fewer? That was some of the feedback. It's definitely a work in progress.
Yeah, I'm going to add on to that. Hi, I'm Milet with AECOM. And one of our homework assignments is to fill in the coloring for this evaluation criteria and get it out, back out to the CAP, so they can take a look at it before it goes to the community. So that's one of our homework assignments, to do that.
Okay. I would put forth that it's probably better in this community to actually beef this up and add more rows rather than take them away. And a few that come to mind to me immediately, actually, I think one that's missing here is kind of the water impact issues. Just today, we've already heard that some of these options have greater impacts, whether it's groundwater, the creeks, things like that. And the other one, somebody brought up, I appreciated it, was kind of, they called the psychosocial costs. I think that's an interesting way of looking at these. And I think it probably will take a bit more of a workup for us to understand what that means, whether it's, you know, a combination of visual, noise, site impacts, but also, you know, whether people can bike across and feel safe and happy, what it means to live near these, these options, what it means to drive by them. And I think that might be another way to cut across these. The more quantitative we can get on each of these options, that's helpful. I understand not all of them fall into those categories.
Could I comment on what you've commented on so far? So when we did present this to the CAP, we did have an additional slide that we kind of had put, I think, technical considerations or something like that. In conversations with staff, they felt like that was a little bit confusing in the sense that we really want to stick to the adopted criteria, and that those other categories of technical, we would try to capture those in the pros and cons. So that was our direction.
Okay. I hear that. I just find this somewhat useful and kind of digestible across multiple options, so I think that's useful. Quick question around order of magnitude of costs. Are we planning to just kind of like ballpark and say, "This one's going to be 200 million, that's going to be 250 million"? What, I mean, I just, I just figure our cost estimation is going to be a little more complicated than that, and I was hoping you could illustrate it.
It is, it is more complicated than that. That's why it's taking us a little bit, am I on, longer to do, but we're really trying to look at what are the various factors associated with the cost of each alternative? You know, what's the cost of the structure? What's the cost to mitigate, you know, creeks? You know, and looking at utilities and trying to really capture what we know today, but there are also still a lot of unknowns that we have to try and capture through a, you know, a contingency evaluation. But it does have backup, and we're following, you know, to follow a cost estimating procedure. We're following Caltrans's project study report procedures for cost estimating at this level of engineering, just to follow something, a practice as well, so.
Okay. So on this document, there may be, you know, one big cost number, but I think it's important for us to break that out, whether it's construction costs, process costs, mitigation costs, hard costs, soft costs, and just get an idea of where each of those falls. A few members of the public have mentioned issues such as sound, bike/ped connectivity, and that makes me think of, you know, the impetus for this whole project, it's kind of east-west connectivity in the city. And I think it's also important for us to contemplate future connectivity, right? So somebody did mention that with the viaduct, we may have easier options for bikes/bicycle connectivity across town. That may also be true for the trench, right? I was thinking, you know, over many years, we've talked about a potential bike connection at Loma Verde, and maybe the trench enables to do that. And so evaluating those kind of like downstream opportunities or lack thereof, I think, is important. And then just two last points, and then I want to turn it over to my colleagues. Two areas I think we need a bit more workup. So one is kind of on whether it's pumping issues or water issues with these various options. I don't think we yet have a great sense of what that looks like for each of them. And then the other, it's not really on the agenda today, but I'll just say, you know, people keep on talking about the tunnel, and we all should work with staff on kind of developing that option, so we kind of have an idea of some of these big questions that folks are asking about, whether it's, you know, ownership, what are the fatal flaws, development potential, cost, et cetera. And we may need to rehash our white paper on that and make it a bit more useful at this point. I think those are my comments for now, but I'll probably have more to say after hearing from you all.
Lydia?
So thank you, Adrian, for bringing up some points. I think one of the things that I'd really like to see is that, in addition to the 3D animation of the height of the viaduct, as well as the poles and even the hybrid option, it would be nice to have, to include story poles, so it's actually a physical life structure that people can actually drive by and see and actually observe the height of what they're going to be dealing with. So 3D animation is beautiful, and it's absolutely great, but I think we need that physical structure to show. And for those people that are living by these, by this tracks, they need to know also how it's going to affect them. Then also, in all of this, you know, there's some road enhancement and modifications along Charleston. So how is that integrated into your circulation studies over here for flow? So it'd be nice to have that added on to the, your diagrams, as well as your matrix and evaluations in terms of circulation. And I did hear in the meeting, the CAP meeting, that somewhere in one of Josh Mello's presentations that, you know, with the Charleston road modification and the grade crossing, it might induce a 30% increase of traffic. So we want to know for sure how that affects this, this intersection, as well as East Meadow, because we're not, you know, it's more than just grade separation, it's also continuing the flow of this, of these streets. So we want to have circulation and not to have traffic. If we're doing all this and putting in all this money, then we certainly want to ensure that traffic is flowing and it's moving. With Loma Verde, I'd like to see that added on to your, into your work over here, simply because if it's something that's going to be proposed for a bicycle pathway, we want people to know what, how that's going to look. On the viaduct, is there emergency exits that, that needs to be put in, that needs to be included? Eddie?
Sorry. All of the alternatives have to look at emergency egress for, in a case a train is stranded. So whether it's the viaduct or the trench, we'd be looking at those and where those would be, need to be located. As a minimum, the width of the, that we're considering, has a walkways on both sides, which are required by the regulatory agencies in case of a train that people need to exit. So there's a tow path on the outside of whatever alternative that we're looking at.
And also, there's the pump stations, and was that the Caltrain was calling the Electric Little House? I don't know the technical name, but they have a power station or something like that that is, is that something that's going to be necessary for all the options that's been named over here? And where will they be at all the different points along this?
Oh, we don't, we can add the, I assume you're referring to substations?
Is it substations?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
That's where they have their power and then?
Right. So it's, their substations are located fairly far apart, but we will work with Caltrain to see if there's a substation within this reach, and we would have to accommodate that substation. And it would be the same issue for all three alternatives, if there's a substation in the area.
Also, so with the hybrid, is that going to provide enough clearance for emergency vehicles, like fire, or fire engines and?
The 15 and a half feet clearance, that's the standard?
With the ladder?
Correct. It does provide for clearance for emergency vehicles, buses, trucks. So that is a standard vertical clearance, and it's used throughout the Caltrain system, and it's also used throughout cities and counties. Caltrans has higher ones on freeways, but this is local streets, so 15 and a half feet is more than adequate for any type of vehicle that you'll encounter in a city.
Okay. And in the CAP meeting, you mentioned something about inverted siphons. What are those?
That goes, I think, back to the question, that is a solution, and we're still looking into that, a solution of how you can take a creek from one side of a trench to another is, so, and one of the questions from the CAP is, what does that look like? And we're developing those. Again, those are not looked on favorably from water agencies, because they have very, very high maintenance issues. And if you have sediment buildup or something and it's not maintained, then you have the potential for flooding upstream. So it's, it's, it's a solution that we're looking into. And again, we'll bring that back as to what that looks like, but it's, that's a type of way to, an engineering method of dealing with the creek.
Okay. So Rob and Ed, I haven't had the chance to read the letters that came back from everybody from Santa Clara Water District and everything. Can you kind of give us a, you know, summary of what they're saying here, especially with the Santa Clara Water District, and then also the response?
I actually believe Eddie just did. In terms of how she described, you know, some of the issues that are of concern to the Water District, in particular as it relates to the trench, I think that on the other alternatives, it looked like they didn't raise any specific issues, at least as I'm recalling.
So based on this letter, you have incorporated into your presentation for the 28th and today?
As noted, no, the presentation we have right now does not show the inverted siphons in it. It's something we have to continue to evaluate and see whether we have the right-of-way to do it, and if we don't, what those impacts to right-of-way. And there are other drainage facilities in there that we have to consider. There's a, I think, an 84-inch large diameter drainage pipe that's coming from Mountain View that discharges into the Southerly Creek, and I'm drawing a blank on that one. So we're evaluating, and that will actually go into our construction cost estimate as we look at those issues and identify them and kind of get our hands around them.
Okay. Thank you. So lastly, I just want to say that I think we all have to be cognizant that it's easy just to talk about noise and vibrations, especially when we're not living right behind these noise and vibrations or even privacy issues. I just hope that as we move along, that we do no harm. And I think that's really important to continue to remember, that we don't let others take on something that we would not want to have to live with. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually wanted to reiterate what some of the things Adrian said too, which was the notion of downstream opportunities. I think that as we build this, I think we need to give more weight to thinking about what that looks like in the future, in terms of connectivity, in terms of bike and pedestrian paths, that kind of thing. The more I think about the viaduct, I, I think we need pictures. Has anyone built a viaduct that we could look at and say, "Yeah, there's a viaduct"? I mean, I'm thinking about, you have a 10-foot sound wall, 21 feet high in the air, right? And I guess part of it is, how long does that run? I mean, that, it's not really the 21 feet to think, because you have a sound wall above that, at least, right? So the sound wall is probably, what, 10 feet? I don't know how big a sound wall, eight feet? Right? So I mean, you're starting to get 31 feet, and you have, so you, and then, so you basically have this obstruction running in the sky. And I guess part of it is, how long does that run? I mean, that, it's not really the 21 feet to think, because you have a sound wall above that, at least, right? So the sound wall is probably, what, 10 feet? I don't know how big a sound wall, eight feet? Right? So I mean, you're starting to get 31 feet, and you have, so you, and then, so you basically have this obstruction running in the sky. So I think if there are pictures of people who've actually built viaducts, I think that would be really helpful to take a look at that. Because it's sort of hard to visualize how that looks. At least it is for me. I think, I wanted to understand a little bit more, when we look at the trench, you have so many cons here, necessarily. I mean, I think, I'd like to understand when it says, in every little thing, it says, first of all, there's the basements under the houses. We would basically just restrict people from building basements there, from building pools. Is that an easement you put on their property, or is that a, or is that a, or is that just basically a new regulation we pass? Is it a taking? Is it not a taking? You know, what does that, what does that kind of look like for people? Are there other unintended consequences that if you have an easement that is a no-build situation, and if there's a no-build situation, sometimes you're not allowed to include that in terms of your FAR? And, I mean, I think we'd need to take a look and see, what does this mean for individual people that live there, and given our regulations? When we talk about, I guess, plants in the backyard and that kind of stuff, I mean, I guess all of that, what that means to the people that would live there if we did the trench. And then we talk about needing, what was it, pumping stations. We talked about right-of-way will need to be acquired. I assume that's taking land for the, for that? Whose land are we taking for those pumping stations? Are they houses? Are they, are they just land that's not being used? I mean, what do we mean by that? I mean, it's a, it's a simple sentence, but do we know?
We're taking, that's again, a part of our evaluation. We're looking at where we need pumping plants, and if we can fit those pumping plants potentially within the Caltrain right-of-way would be our first, I guess, our first?
Preference.
Preference, thank you. And then if not there, maybe, you know, encroaching into the roadway. And the last result would be looking at private property. Those pumping plants can be, you know, fairly large structures, and part of that is going to be a conversation, since we're going to be pumping stuff out of the, for the trench, you know, out of the trench itself is, you know, what storm event we have to pump for. And then that will house the, that will determine the size of the pump plant itself, and whether we need to store it. I designed a pump plant that was on Mission Boulevard, that was a structure that required three six-foot diameter pipes underneath the roadway for storage capacity, but the house itself was more like a 20 by 10 by 10 structure. So like, I don't know, there's, anyhow, where I live, there's pumping plants all over the, because we have a lot of groundwater pumping there. So those are, they're like little tools, like tough sheds, and they could be that, about that size.
Good. And then I think the maintenance issues, we shouldn't, we should think about those long-term. I mean, you know, we talk about these different options having different costs, so what is the magnitude on a yearly basis so that we would be adding to our budget on maintenance? And I think that's a significant, significant issue, and that we should look at and take that, take that one fairly seriously. I think when we talk, when we think about the groundwater pumping, I think the community has raised a lot of questions about basements and pumping water and hydrology and all of that. This seems like a much more massive pumping operation, but maybe I'm wrong. And I guess all those questions would need to be looked at as well, and they seem, they seem rather significant. And since a lot of these are aesthetic questions, I really do think the more we can hone in on what does the viaduct look like, what does the hybrid solution look like, I mean, how unattractive or attractive is it going to be? What are things you can do to make it more attractive? And then in the trench, I do think there's so many, so many questions here we're going to need to really delve into. And I guess on the viaduct, I was a little surprised, you need a 1.4% design except grade, right? Exception? If you don't get that, the viaduct is just not feasible at that point?
The viaduct requires a 1.4?
Right, so if you don't get the 1.4, it's not feasible.
Correct. Now, to that extent, we have talked to Caltrain. Caltrain has approved a 1.3 for San Bruno.
Okay.
So, you know, they do, and it's also, again, as Caltrain points out, any design exception is on a case-by-case basis, so you have to make the case for each one to show that there is no other option for that.
So there is no other option? When Caltrain says there is no other option, do they mean, like, no other option with the, doing the viaduct, or do they mean no other option by, like, yeah, you guys could do a hybrid and not need it?
Caltrans still owes us the procedure for their design exception, so we will be getting that and find out what that, what that means from them.
Good, because, I mean, obviously, the question is, how much money do you have to spend? Say the community decided they wanted a viaduct option, you know, how much money do you spend going through the design before Caltrain tells you, no, sorry, you can't do that, you're going to have to do something else? I mean, that's, that's obviously a clear concern. In terms of, in terms of the trench issue, how, when we talk about like major utility relocations for utilities along in the Caltrain corridor, I guess, there are so many of these things, how are we going to put some color to them? Like, is major utility relocations, is it a cost issue, or is it beyond a cost issue? Like, you know, you have to get approvals from X number, and you're unlikely to get them. I mean, so I think there's, there's cost issues, and there's also the ability to get something done. The creek stuff, I mean, some speakers talked about, well, this is Silicon Valley, we should be able to solve the engineering. But it's not just an engineering challenge, it's a regulatory challenge, because there's so many people getting involved in creeks. So I think we need to break out some of these challenges so the community can understand it, so that we can understand. If we were to move with a trench, what are the steps it would take? What does that look like from a planning process? Because frankly, at the moment, there's so many of these large issues, it's unclear which are issues that we think we can overcome in a feasible, or we think these are going to be really challenging to overcome, and, you know, we get to this point. I think we're going to have to break some of that out. All right. I think that's pretty much what I had. Thanks. Thanks.
So in our next item, we're going to be talking about the idea of doing a subsurface passenger option while leaving freight at the surface, and basically bifurcating freight service from passenger service. Has there been any thought about whether that's feasible, possible, recommended, an option for the above surface, once we're looking? I mean, as the, you know, what would a viaduct or a hybrid look like if it was carrying passengers only as opposed to carrying freight, right? How much less substantial a visual impact and noise impact does it say a viaduct with passenger only have versus one with freight? Is that worth considering?
Yeah, so as you mentioned, it is a slide in our next agenda item on that, and, but just a quick answer on that, is we have requested Caltrain, they are designing a portion of their line without freight, which is in the most northern end, as they go into the Transbay Terminal. And they have indicated to us, they will get us that design criteria that they have, which is a starting point for us to, you know, take a look at where they are currently designing for their passenger rail without freight.
That's great. Thank you for that. Okay. Adrian?
Just a few more, some of your comments triggered a few thoughts. One, so like Councilmember Sharp, I actually had a kind of hard time understanding some of the negatives on some of the options. And one that I thought was especially hard to understand was kind of the construction phasing. So while the visuals and the videos were super helpful, I think it may be nice to just kind of get a bulleted list of how construction will be phased in and what happens, when and why, for each of the alternatives. Just, I had a hard time kind of following, like, you know, the right lane is closed on Alma, and then we lower this, and then we move that, so that might be useful. Councilmember Sharp also, it's one good points about the trench and kind of property impacts, or potential property impacts. And it may be helpful for us to kind of work up a worst-case scenario of property impacts, what that might mean for a resident along Park Boulevard, for example, what regulations the city might need to put in place, and what mitigations we may be able to offer, just so we kind of have a worst-case idea of what that could be. Also, questions about maintenance long-term. And the final one, another factor we're not really considering here, I'll just put it out there, is our Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, and what these different alternatives look like with regards to that. We are kind of considering them against our comprehensive plan and other community inputs, but with our recently passed ASCAP, if there is a way to evaluate these alternatives against it, that may be helpful for us too. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one speaker who'd like to speak still to this item before we move on to number Okay. Two speakers, you'll have two minutes each. Kiri Lindgren and Cedric, I'm sorry, Cedric, I still haven't figured out how to pronounce your last name, I apologize.
Many residents are worried that either Palo Alto Avenue or Churchill, or both, or both?
Speaking Mike, thanks.
Pull the mic down a few.
Yeah. Many residents are worried that either Palo Alto Avenue or Churchill may be closed. There is a way to keep both of them open, starting with the hybrid crossing at Palo Alto Avenue, and then elevating the track level, going past the train station at a 1% grade or less, past Embarcadero and reaching a track height of 21 feet above grade at Churchill. In this case, both Palo Alto Avenue and Churchill would be kept open. With these roads open, there would be no need to widen the Embarcadero underpass at this time. But any changes in the area should be consistent with a wider underpass at a future date. The raised viaduct would then be, continue beyond Churchill, past Oregon Expressway, Meadow and Charleston, then slowly taper down to grade at San Antonio. I've heard that the council has some ideas about changing University Avenue, and let us have a complete solution for Palo Alto's grade crossings and include both University and Embarcadero as part of this solution. The extra time to study this will be well worth it in a long time. Now, in addition, there's a good way to compare the viaduct and the hybrid. With the hybrid, you have a dirt berm, which you can't see through. With the viaduct, you have it a little five feet higher, but you can see through, and you have, you get some use underneath the viaduct, say, or a park, or, say, bike path, and that has a definite advantage. Thank you.
Thank you. Cedric, to be followed by Alan Hardog.
So, sorry, just a couple more things. Regarding the impacts, I think it'd be good to show the impacts for people living near the pump stations. Presumably, those will run night and day at 24/7, whereas the trains don't run late at night. And then, of course, sound carries much greater distance at night when it's quiet, so there's a potentially significant impact. Also, the impact should include the amount of water, the wastewater pumped out of the groundwater. How many gallons per year might that imply? And then are there any potential problems with properties subsiding above the water table that's pumped dry? And then finally, I'd love it, the consultant, if you could answer the questions I asked earlier. How far back from the trench would the tree exclusion zone extend as a function of the track depth? And what is the distance of the western track wall from the western right-of-way boundary south of Meadow? I'd appreciate having those answers. Thank you. I'm sure the other nearby residents would like to know that as well.
Thank you. Alan Hardog, last speaker for this item.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I am in support of separating the passenger from the freight and having freight at grade and passenger obviously underground.
Thank you. And that will take us to our next item.
Do you have any other questions?
All right. Lydia, you have a question, and then staff and consulting team might want to respond. Any comments?
Is this the question about the distance? Well, to answer your question on the distances for, from the walls to the property lines, I think that goes back to, I think, to the, one of the suggestions from the rail committee is to create an exhibit, and we'll be working on that to show where the ground anchors are relative to property lines and relative to other facilities. So that'll be an exhibit we're working on, and that'll go directly to answering the question that the public had about what those distances are, so. And we'll also show what you also requested is heights as well. So we'll get those dimensions onto our exhibits that we'll be preparing here.
Lydia, do you have any other questions?
Just one very quickly. With the viaduct, you've taken into consideration, even though it's open in certain areas that you can see through, that the freight train with what it carries and its load, and it can support that, right?
Yes.
So it doesn't have to be solid wall?
Correct. So all of our alternative analysis considers the seismic criteria that we need to design for with, you know, in California, as well as, we're considering that the freight, whatever those characteristics that are in the design criteria required for freight are included into those alternatives, so that we're comparing apples and apples. One alternative does not, they all consider those factors into it.
Thank you. Thank you, Corey.
Sure. We'll actually take a quick five-minute break, exactly five minutes, and we'll move on to All right, let's bring the meeting back to order, move on to item number two. So item number two is Project Schedule and Work Plan Update, including discussion of the idea for freight train on the surface and passenger train underground. And I'll turn to staff and consulting team, and we will get through this item as well. Staff?
Yep. So thank you, Chair Walbuck. So now, we're talking about the work plan, this is more of a standing item, we think we have to have at every meeting, just because there's so many moving parts, and so many different committees, from the CAP Committee and the TAC Committee, and you'll be glad to hear that we pulled the TAC back together this last month. We also have stakeholder meetings that we're having with different organizations like the Water District and other things, so just keeping the schedule updated, it does change a little bit, and we have that as just a standing item on the agenda. So that's what this is about. I'll pass it on to Eddie, just to walk through all of the activities that are happening this month, December, January, and then ultimately February, which is our goal of having a preferred solution for council consideration.
Okay. Great. Thank you again. So this, this is the schedule that I put up earlier in the previous presentation. We're in the month of November, we've had a lot of activity, and I'm just going to kind of walk through the activities for November, is December, January, and February that we are anticipating to be completing during this time period. So in November has been a very, very busy month. We had a CAP meeting, and Milette here will give an update of overview of the CAP here in a little bit, and that was on November 7th. We, today, we're at the Rail Committee meeting here. At the CAP meeting, we reviewed some of the alternatives that we saw today, we looked at the evaluation matrix, we talked briefly about the traffic. The traffic update is, we're actually in the process of doing data collection, and the analysis will be done in the next month. And then we had our ALTA planning is on our team, and they're going to be giving us Bicycle PED input, and they're to be preparing some exhibits that will be part of what we present to the community in, at the end of this month. We're here at the Rail Committee, we've done the review of the alternatives matrix, and we'll be doing an overview of the CAP. And again, we're reviewing the work plan. At the community meeting, we have two more community meetings planned, the one in November, which will concentrate on the Charleston Meadow which will concentrate on the Charleston-Meadow alternatives we will be bringing forward. Is this a fire? Okay.
So we'll put it in the door right here.